Welcome everyone to tonight's board meeting. Our board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community and charged with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forms for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. We have any visitors' requests or rules a little more closely and that time comes. Carla, can you roll call for us tonight, please?
Ms. Harding?
Here.
Mr. Hyde?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mrs. Jean-Curie?
Present.
Mr. Stubble?
Here.
Mrs. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Zulu?
Here.
Okay, thanks Carla. We have a couple of presentations tonight and I think tonight we will start off with Mr. Engel.
Okay.
Please.
Pull this back in here, I just like to put it in. Just something to hide behind. I gotta get off field glasses. Good evening, my name is Ed Engel. I've been your Board member for thirty-four years. I retired in the past year. I represented Oakfield, Alabama, and all the other twenty-two districts. Also, I've been a member of the New York State Rural Schools for twenty years and I chaired that also for a term, so. If you remember, if anybody remembers, I come back, I come to you back in 2015 when I said, "This community needs a agriculture program." And I brought with me, I brought the Medina FFA, which seemed to impress you people because you, I think you remember Matt, I think you were on the Board then, impressed the people and you've had a good program ever since and it seems to take off in all the twenty-two districts. I'm here tonight with an idea to honor Oakfield, Alabama alumni, veterans who have served our country. We have always honored sports, academia, public figures, service, but very little for veterans. If it wasn't for veterans, we would not have a true education. We might be speaking German, we might be speaking Japanese at this meeting. Many have paid the ultimate price to preserve freedom. What got me going on this project was the many extreme disrespectful remarks of our past president. He's talked about veterans and their service. And if you don't, haven't kept up on the news, I have a copy here, if anybody wants to see it. I did a whole copy, there's actually two or three copies you could probably do. He's been censored by the American Legion, the VFW, and condoned by them. This is what upset me as a school board member. Students should not hear or read about remarks like that. Just a reminder, I'm a Republican, I'm a non-vet. Why would a student want to go into armed services if you're called a sucker or a loser? We need to honor them and this is the project I would like you to take in mind. This is something I did at Lewiston Porter. If you're not familiar with Lewiston Porter, it's a town just outside Niagara Falls, about seven miles. I ride my bike a lot, you probably see me come around here a lot of times, and to get a lot of chance of think. And during this thinking process, I'm thinking, "What can we do? What can we do to vets?" And I started coming to the Board, the Board just like you did, work with the superintendent, and I said, "We gotta have something to the side of the school where the kids walk in, a memorial to veterans." And I'll pass pictures around, they're not in order, but you can see, it's not fancy. Split them up because they're all basically the same thing. They're not fancy, but I said, "What can I do? How do I raise money? My son was home for Christmas, Dad, start a GoFundMe." Well, you know, my age, what's a GoFundMe? I do run the Lewiston Porter Alumni website, we put it on there. I raised six thousand dollars within a short couple of days. After that, I got a lot of checks in, it come up to about eight thousand dollars and I cut it off because I had no idea what I wanted or what the... I got a lot of help, the superintendent's secretary, her husband was, does cement contracting, he did the floor for us, and we went from there. I was charged, and this bench, as you see coming around, cost us thirty-eight hundred. I called Leroy the other day, there's a memorial marker company in Leroy, and they're willing to give us, or give you if you're interested, one for twenty-five hundred, which was sizable savings. Or you could go to a memorial, assist, with honoring veterans. It's up to you people what you want. But there's a big difference, say, between twenty-five hundred and the one that would be a granite stone is eight thousand dollars, so the big thing to consider it. Let's see. I'm concerned about the location. I want it near a main entrance where students will see it daily and be reminded of freedom is not free. You put it out somewhere, out by the flagpole, yeah, they'll pay attention for a while and then you'll lose the interest in it or won't see it. Also, we make the students aware of the important dates like Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Pearl Harbor Day. We put a wreath out on it, we also put the flag out, what else? Oh, our teacher does a sign which explains to all the kids as they walk in the door, they can tell, you know, they remind them of the day, Pearl Harbor Day, whatever it may be. What you need to do is form a small committee, decide what kind of memorial you'd like, where you'd like it, how you want to raise funds, how you, what type, the design you would like. Would you like the wording I used? I have the three people work on the wording, and then also have veterans input. The GoFundMe raised fat, was fast. I had about twenty-five hundred people on my website and I figured if everybody gave five or ten dollars, that would be more. It wasn't like that, I was kind of surprised. Fifty, a hundred, two hundred, five hundred dollars people give to the veterans site. So I throw this out, "Do you have any questions? What do you think about it? Do you want to come back or what? This is what I, this is an idea I had, I did it, is it the right way? I don't know." But I, it took care of this whole heartbeat when you talk about veterans calling them suckers or losers.
Do we have anything on campus now, any symbols at all? We've got nothing?
No.
No question.
Last year I sat in on a meeting, I don't know, JC, if you were on the meeting there, looking at creating a club within the school for honoring veterans.
It's still in infancy, we do have two teachers who are trying to get the Veterans Club going and I think the plan is to head and reach out to Mr. Engel and see if he can come up with a couple of solutions.
So in that meeting last year, we talked about actually building a plaque for each OA graduate that went into the military and putting it out on the wall and then we even talked about on the screen out there, actually having a picture of each service member and going through all of those.
Can I, can I run a... Lewiston VFW did a memorial and it was, put everybody's name on it. It was a complete failure, they didn't get all the names on. It was expensive to, the actual stone is eight thousand, then you gotta pay to everybody's name engraved. People that were five-star awards didn't get their name on. People didn't make the deadline, then they're upset, so they had to be put their name on the back. So just keep it general, keep it simple.
I like the general approach but also like the personal.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted, I didn't mention it, but it was a...
I liked some of the personal stuff we talked about last year and then even like the technology class was going to get into actually making the plaques and like, so you're really going to pull all the kids into putting some time into it and I think that, I think a general one, just as an overall statement, but I kind of liked the personal touch.
They have a history club at Luport, which does a lot. When we did the presentation, we had the veterans come in for dinner and, by the way, if you saw the pictures, you see my friend there, I talked to him, I see him every year, he's ninety-five years old, veteran, and I said, "I'll always see, see you next year," you know. I sit next to him and talk to him. But yeah, we, the Veterans Club at Luport, raised funds to half a barbecue chicken, some pasta, a salad, some woman from Youngstown baked a huge cake for them. We had a speaker from the Niagara Falls Air Force Base and they do that on a yearly basis. So you could pick a club or a group, you know, whatever you want. Come on, give me more questions because I, you know, I think I got everything across to you, but...
So add that, the bench, that was granite, right?
Yeah.
That picture there. And are you, could this be something that would be, a bench made that would be inside the school? Is that a possibility?
Yeah. It was at, yeah, there was, just wasn't room on the right side, so we decided to put it right outside the building.
Okay.
But you know, you've got a lot of room there with all those entrances.
Yeah, well, that's just what I'm thinking, there's so much room right on the inside of here.
I wanted so, we also put a maple next to it, we, I paid for a maple and then the planters too. I wanted so kids waiting for the pickup, you know, the parents pick them up, they can sit there. Be constantly on important dates, you want to remind them, freedom is not free.
I think we've shifted a little bit to that, at least in the elementary school, there was definitely a Veterans Day that we had and I think that that's important that you know the different branches of service that you can possibly might be members of and then just kind of going back and bringing in veterans to these events is a really important thing and it's a great connection for kids to see that it is an honorable thing to do.
We had our Veterans Day assembly here.
Mrs. Fisher did it.
Yeah. Tracy was just like shedding up, right, and Mrs. Fisher and they, I mean, my parents went, they just were...
I heard that at the coffee spot on Wednesday, all the veterans were very impressed with the assembly that you put on, very impressed, so. You did very good on that one.
So I don't see a problem with this at all, it's just getting it started, I think, and this is a conversation that's definitely going to get it moving and then maybe funneling it, JC, through clubs that we have available, that would be good connections for this and I like Pete, your idea to possibly, I love it when kids start to look at that technology piece and maybe making something that would honor these veterans. I do see what you're saying as far as maybe forgetting, but like I also think that there are things like growing memorials that you could have. I, I know like Kendall, they did the perimeter of the sidewalk and then they had, it was all blank bricks and that they wanted a brick in the sidewalk, they could pay for it and have their name engraved and it was never a time limit, it's just whenever that happens and at certain times of the year they can come back to it. I don't know if we're going to that extent here because I think that would be a very big memorial, but I think to get something started like this is not a bad idea.
Well, you can, my point of view is emotional, you know, when I heard this, you know, my old heart started, I have to do something, you know.
Sure.
And this is not the ultimate, you have different situation and maybe like say, a committee, a board member, a veteran, you know, and someone else, take a look at it.
I think it's a worthy cause and I think that we definitely have our support and then we'll do our best to kind of follow up on this, Ed, and then get back to you and kind of see where we can...
Appreciate it.
Yeah, because we'd love to have you as a part of this if you're willing to...
Share wealth and expertise.
Oh yeah, you have to go through the whole situation, talk, you know, because everybody wants to put their father's name on the plaque and there just isn't room. How far do you go back?
Right.
The Spanish-American law, you know. And it was, it was a big boondoggle in Lewiston because they just simply didn't get the names right and...
Sure.
Oh, even spelling, you know, spelling got screwed up on it, so.
Well, Ed, we appreciate it and I think there'll be a lot of people that appreciate this once it gets done and it's going to start a lot of other good ideas that are going to honor our veterans.
Well, thanks for listening, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you so much.
We'll be in touch.
So don't forget to stop by the next time.
Ed, you want your pictures back?
Oh, yeah.
Everybody get a chance to see them here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Take care, Mr. Engel.
Oh, here, this is the funny one. We, Operation Green Light, I don't know if you've been, ever been to my house, they always have a green light on for veterans. And we did the same thing, it's the second week of November and we colored the lights that go on the flag at Luport. The only problem is Luport's color's green, so no one really knows.
Good effort, thanks for Luport.
Have a good Christmas, Ed.
Bye-bye.
Thanks for the time.
Okay. Next up is our ELA Science Department.
Barbara, you got it. Arm Russell to go first?
No, I drew the shorts first.
You did draw the shorts.
I don't, Bernie and Dave, I just give a quick overview. What I asked them to come this month, last month we presented Regents data and what we did early out of the year is we presented each department with item analysis data. We didn't have the county and school-by-school comparison data yet, we actually just got that. What I asked them to do this month, they just come and give an overview on what they do, how they use that data to improve what we're doing in the classroom. So I don't know who's going first, it sounds like Bernie, but I'll let her just give a quick overview, we don't have slides and we didn't want to bury you with a bunch of numbers, just a little bit about our process.
Okay, well, first off, thank you for inviting the ELA Department to speak this evening. Now, analyzing the test data is something that's new, we haven't done, except we've done it for the past two years. And we had a chance, starting about four months ago, to look at our data from June and a couple of things stood out to us. First off, when we were scoring in June, we discovered that our kids last year did very well in the multiple choice section of the test. Now, that multiple choice section, some years is more difficult than others, you know, and last year was a good year for us, our kids did well that year. So we looked at, how do we struggle with the, how do our juniors struggle with the test last year? First off, our kids always struggle with the length of the exam. I'm not quite sure how you fix that other than give the kids endurance practice, you know, how do you prepare them to sit for a three-hour exam? And a lot of them, it's, you know, one hour or you know, the two-hour limit, "I can go, I'm done." You know, so how do you get them to go back and just strengthen their endurance to go back and look at what you did, look at what you did in the test and make changes? They just don't do that. And I'm not, it's a systemic thing, I think that's a problem over. However, we broke down our results by the next-generation standards. We found a couple of, we found, we discovered a couple of things. Our students always struggle with the central idea essay. Now, the central idea essay is, a lot of the kids, they can say, for lack of a better term, a cape walk, it's not. It's a two-paragraph piece and, okay, two paragraphs, it should be easy to write. Now, the first part of it, you need to analyze the theme of a piece of literature. And sometimes it's a poem, sometimes it's an excerpt from a story. And the second part is applying a figurative language device to, not figurative language, but a literary device to that theme. And our kids have a very difficult time putting those two things together. So right off the bat, they're losing points that, it's kind of points that are left on the table. So we said, "Well, we need to do something about that," and I'll come back to that in a minute. The second thing, the second issue we found, our kids have difficulty going through and understanding informational texts and then that's on us, you know, do we give the kids enough informational texts? Do we always, do we focus on fiction when we're reading stuff in class? So it's something else to think about. And third, our kids struggle with vocabulary and something that we need to plan to look at in the future, but, or the, you know, the third thing that we really do need to consider looking forward. So how do we use the data? Okay, so first off, I think in late September this year, Mrs. Shadle came to me and she said, "I'd like to," the plan was this year to offer the exam in June. And she said, "Well, I've got nineteen kids who I think are going to struggle in June and June is like the last best effort for the year." She goes, "What if we give those kids the exam in January?" And half that, I think ten of the kids are CSE students, the other nine are regular ed students. And she said, "Well, what can we do?" So we kind of put our heads, we put our heads together and we spoke with Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Spector, and we decided to put a plan out, we were able to get off the ground and plan of action that we think is going to help, really, really help these kids. First off, these nineteen juniors are going to take the exam in January and they were identified because they all scored, they all scored below a seventy on either the Regent's Global Exam last year or their overall ELA average was below a seventy, right? Everybody else in the class will still continue to take the exam in June. We placed as many of those students that we thought might struggle as possible in AIS classes with Heather Shadle. Turns out there was nine students, we figured the other, there were ten that are CSE students would be getting some additional support through the, with their CSE teachers, but we figured at least, let's get nine of them in there, let's see what happens. We decided it's going to provide those students with an additional chance of passing the ELA Regents. They have, there's no, there's no fifty this year, they have to get a fifty-five. CSE students need to get fifty-five, regular ed students need to get a sixty-five, okay? And then pass or fail, you know, if you pass, you have the option of improving your score in June. If you fail, obviously you're going to be retaking in June. So we thought this is, this is going to help at least those struggling students. Then we decided to look at that central idea essay and we decided this during a department meeting. And we decided, let's not just focus on the central idea essay, you know, with Regents practice or with regular writing requirements in junior-year English. We decided that we are eighth, grades eight through eleven, we are going to work with that central idea essay. So I'm going to start with it with my eighth breakers when we come back from break, but eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, they'll be focusing on, okay, so how do I apply a theme to a, how do I decide and determine what the theme is in a piece of literature? And then how do I apply a literary device to that? We are going to provide the kids with, for practice-wise, a list of universal themes so that, to kind of get them thinking more easily about what themes apply to a piece of literature and then just practice, practice, practice. We think we'll see some growth even at the end of the year with this, the end of this year with this, okay? We also looked at, sorry, my brain just kind of like went this way.
You're doing a great job, the universal themes dropped on the menu and keep going.
So we decided we're going to focus on that because our argumentative essays, which is the second essay, the results for those are pretty good and we already do, we all have the kids write argumentative essays from grades eight through eleven, so we said, "That's kind of okay." And we decided to add more informational text and that might help with the central idea stuff as well. So we think going forward that's going to help. Thirdly, we're going to look at the vocabulary. We haven't decided on the plan yet. I do vocab in eighth grade, I know they do vocabulary in sixth and seventh grade, but moving forward, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, we're not quite sure how we're going to implement more vocabulary lessons. As I said, it's kind of in the initial stages of the discussion, so stay tuned for that. And then, you know, we talked about, I talked about last night, I talked about the length of the exam, I think that's just endurance and I think it's just, you know, I don't know.
How long is it?
The kids take a lot of Regents exams and maybe they'll get, you know, the more practice that way, but we've got to find a way to...
How many multiple choices is it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four and then you have two essays that are...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the central idea and then argumentative essay. And the argumentative essay, they usually are given, they are usually given four pieces of informational text, which they need to, okay, so they're given, they're given the claim and then they need to decide, okay, so which way am I going to go?
Right.
And then choose the appropriate literature to support their claim. They're okay with that, but the central idea, they're really just leaving the, leaving the points on the table. And, you know, and we were scoring last June and Mrs. Shadle said, "Jeez," she goes, "I go through this over and over and over." And Mr. Carpino and I said, "You know what, maybe we just need to," you know, everybody's got to do it, you know, start small, maybe, you know, have the kids, you know, talk about theme, okay, now, maybe you do that for a week with one piece and then the next week add on, okay, so, you know, how could you, how could you, you know, pick this piece apart? You know, what did the author use? Was it point of view to get the point of, to, you know, to move that theme across? Was it plot structure? Was it figurative language? What was it? Which is, the kids, they just, we don't know.
Well, it's hard because it's inferential, right? There's a lot of, it's author's craft, like you're breaking all those things down and it's not, it's just not detail-specific, right?
No, right. You have to explain the theme with a couple of details from the text and each paragraph is roughly like six sentences and then you take that, you know, take that literary device and say, "Okay, so how did the author use the point of view to push, to move this theme along?" Or, and actually, Mrs. Shadle always says, she says to the kids, "As a fallback, always use point of view, there's always point of view in the piece. Always, 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 don't look for anything else." And she's still had some kids not use point of view, you know, so we figure, starting with eighth grade, this will help.
Oh, it definitely is going to.
Yeah, this will help.
The consistency piece is fantastic and the fact that you're able to pinpoint its central idea or central message...
Yes.
And then be able to look at that across the board and do it in a systematic way that hopefully is going to strengthen these responses.
That's, that's the hope.
Right? Like I commend you for doing that, looking at that data and then, and then putting it into practice. I think the idea of like the universal dropdowns of like, these are the different types of themes that exist, you give them like tools in their toolbox to be able to pull from.
Well, that's, that's where you're thinking, actually, that was Mrs. Shadle's idea, she's, "Hey, what if we gave the kids a list for the practice? So that way they can, oh gee, this fits here or this fits here." Maybe it just kind of like, you know, get them to focus.
But even moving forward, you could see like even posters in your classrooms that are consistent, like, you know, here's your, your, you know, your argumentative, this is your graphic work. Like you've, you've got a good template moving forward here and I think, you know, this is something that I know as a fourth-grade teacher, central message and central idea is an absolute, that's in my student learning objective for this year, that's what I have to improve upon. It's hard.
I know, and the kids have, the kids have a really, really tough time with it, but putting those two pieces together, you're looking at it going, "Oh, this should be easy."
It's not, it's not though.
This should be easy, it's not. It's not. And, you know, we all, I think we all do everything like individually, but then, you know, that's what the state's asking for.
But it's the language though, like what you're saying in comparison to, you know, another grade to another grade, if you can get on the same language, you're going to be so much the same thing.
Right, you're seeing it, yeah. And the sheer repetition.
And that's what it takes though, right? It's that mind mapping to get to this, it's a higher level or not.
Yeah.
Right? Like for the argumentative, you just, I mean, you shouldn't, don't be just, but it's, you got to establish that claim, right? And then support it with those details and then that's that. And I mean, it's still hard to do, but this, this is great.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And any, anything else?
Any questions? Yeah, I got one.
Yeah.
How often do the standards change in where you'll have to readdress this, that eighth through eleventh grade? Are you going to have to do this on a yearly basis, like meet, find out what the standard is for that exam and then reteach?
Well, most of the standards are addressed on the test in some way, shape, or form and they generally stay, you know, generally there are two vocabulary questions in the test. Generally, for the multiple choice, there are, there might be three or four figurative language questions, that, those are kind of standard. The central idea question stays, well, until it's, until the...
Don't, don't say it too loud. Don't whisper.
That has been on the test for a while.
Okay. You want us to teach it at eighth grade and then...
How about that? It's been on the test for a while, so.
All right.
Any questions?
No questions, just a comment, it's nice to hear data than driving instruction, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And that vocabulary, if you figure that out, like there's tons of little fun books to read about vocabulary, but to do it in a systematic way, it's very, I think it's very difficult.
Yeah.
Especially when you're pulling from a lot of different texts.
Well, the, the other thing is, you know, we have a way of doing it with, I worked out with Mr. Peterson and Mr. Rockwell and that's one, that's one way, but that's for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Right.
You know, so then you're talking ninth through eleventh grade, ninth through twelfth grade, okay, what do you do? You know, what's, I wouldn't, with eleventh graders, I wouldn't use the same method I'm using now with the, with the eighth graders, you know, I, you know, just don't know what the, what the right answer, what that is. So that's going to take some talk.
I, I love it, this is great. Thank you so much.
Good, you're welcome.
Thanks, Bernie.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, all yours.
Um, like Bernie mentioned, thanks for your time tonight. Thanks for all you do that, uh, support us as teachers, um, in a district that, um, I love calling home. Um, my wife keeps begging me, find a job closer to home. Like, no, not gonna happen, not gonna happen. So thank you for your time tonight. Um, last year I presented, um, on my own behalf, on behalf of Mr. Peterson as well, the, the work I was doing in item analysis and data analysis. Um, and Justin, I think you said it last year, data's not fun, but it's necessary to drive instruction.
That's right.
Um, and so we've been working now as a science department, and how does that look? So I've done like crazy spreadsheet template, and we've pushed it out to the four core science, high school science classes. Um, so that spreadsheet now exists for all four classes. Um, so we now have that data, and what we're doing with it, um, we'll talk about tonight. Um, Matt charged each department to come up with a, a goal for the year for the department. It could be an individual teacher goal, it could be a goal for the department as a whole. It could be academic related, it could be vocabulary related, it could be anything we wanted to. And as a science department, data-based, that's just how our brains function. We decided our goal this year is to raise the lowest three scores in each high school subject area by at least five points. That's a goal. Um, our class sizes vary, our living environment and our earth science classes are quite large. I have a moderate-sized class, I only have twenty-one students taking regions chemistry this year. And last year Kathy Rushell had one student taking physics. So, we said, well, for Kathy to raise her passing percentage, well, she can't. She was a hundred percent last year. Can't get better than that. And for us to raise the passing percentage of our large classes, you gotta get six or seven extra kids to pass the exam, and that can be a challenge. So we said, well, let's just take a look at our three lowest scores and see if we can bump them up by at least five points. Raising class average, maybe not passing percentage, but at least class average. And if the low kids get a boost, hopefully the high kids get a little boost as well. So that's our goal. Um, and what are we doing to, to foster that growth? Um, we are encouraging our kids to go to after-school tutoring and make use of office hours and serve the academic support, uh, which we've been now, this is our year two or three of rolling that, rolling that system out. Um, so really just encouraging our kids to spend more time with us as teachers. And if we're not available, finding another science teacher that can kind of help them out, push them in the right direction. Um, we have used that item analysis from last year's regions exams to statistically select weaker units that we find within our standards and within our subject areas. Um, and we're adding enrichment to that, to those units specifically, to kind of increase the, the rigor and increase the performance in those specific units. Um, so in my classroom, I've taken a look at that data. Um, I use a flipped classroom, my regions chemistry classroom. And I've looked at that data, and last year, for the first time in a few years, I unflipped some units. I taught their traditional stance, their standpoint. Um, and my regions results reflected it greatly. That those units that my students performed poorly on in June of twenty twenty-two were almost my top units in June of twenty twenty-three.
Because you, so you, you're doing the direct instruction.
So this year, um, and at the end of last year, I asked my students, like, what units would you recommend me flipping? And me teaching traditionally? And so part of it is data-driven, and part of it is student input-driven as well. Because I know it pretty well, that's why I'm teaching it. But from a student standpoint, would it have been easier in their mind if I taught it a different way? My results say yes, it does. So partially student-driven, partially data-driven. Um, so we're adding enrichment. Um, you approved, and Mr. Peterson took a handful of us to Florida last June. So I know Mr. Phelps is implementing some strategies that we learned, um, at that conference in Orlando last June, July, um, start of summer, um, where he is working on, um, it's called the last, last, last technique. When he does a review session, I watched him do it the other day, I popped into his room for the first five minutes of class, he ended up on his board. Here's a question from our last day of class. Here's our, here's a question from last week's class. And here's a question from last month's class, or last unit's class. So it's working on, what did we do recently? What did we do kind of recently, and what's pretty far in the past, that we need to bring back to the forefront of our mind? Because it's gonna make a play tomorrow, or next week, or June, when it comes. So we're adding enrichment, we're adding new techniques, we're adding a little more strategic planning into, um, our units and our lessons. Um, Bernie mentioned in the ELA department, um, reading and vocab is a struggle. Reading and vocab is still a struggle in science, it doesn't matter. They're the same kids, so why should the struggle be different? Well, it's not, right? Um, so we are working on reading with our kids, we're working on test-taking skills and strategies. Um, and sometimes it is using those vocab terms and rewriting the questions that New York State provides us on the regions exam, and annotating them so they make more sense for us. If I know I can replace, in the question, it gives me the definition of the word, well, if I can cross it off and just write the word in its place, the question becomes a hundred times easier. Free points, free points. Um, and then me particularly, I'm sharing data with my kids. I've gone crazy with data. Um, and I have up on my wall, I've laminated the standards that I hit most often, or the standards that appear on the regions most often. And every time I do a weekly regions review with my kids, or we do a unit test, or we do a quiz, I put it into a magic spreadsheet that I've created, and it pops out, my students can hit this standard eighty-eight percent of the time. And I write it on the wall for my kids to see. My kids see the data this year. Now, I'm now working that into my assessments this year, where the last page of every unit test for me takes a look at old questions, or old tests, or old units worth of work. And what questions are on there? The, the questions that are up on my wall, the standards up on my wall, that are the lowest percentages. Because I know that's where we need the most work. Makes sense to me. Um, and then to help this year, the, the new eighth grade test is computer-based testing, um, for science. So our eighth grade teachers, um, Shubha Luker and Yel Lupo, they're preparing their kids for computer-based testing. Every unit test that they give is on their Chromebooks. So the kids are used to seeing questions on the Chromebooks, they're used to interacting with different formats on the Chromebooks. So the kids see that test in April or May, they're ready for computer-based testing on top of the content. That's our goal, and that's our path.
Man, you should go on tour.
I know. I know.
You really should. Both of you guys, it's, it's very nice job. Uh, I'd never heard of, um, it's always, you wanna raise your, your, you know, your, your average, right? Your average score. I've never thought about looking at the three lowest scores, right? Like, that's an interesting.
Yeah, and we, we arbitrarily picked three. Uh, we could have easily picked the lowest five scores.
Sure.
We just kind of threw some numbers out there, and I think that just resonated with us the most, so.
It's a neat, I, I, that's a neat idea, because your groups fluctuate so much, right? So it's hard to, 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 to raise the average. I, I like your last, last, last as well. That's, it's, it's embedded review, right? Like, that, that, that works. Yeah, right? Because that's the biggest thing we're so worried about tomorrow, we forget about what we did yesterday. And you never look back. And, and you, you, we, we remember as well, as the kids do, right? At the end of the day, and I, I, I love that idea. Um, but your highs are on the prize, and it's always on the data. I, I, you've got a goal, you both have goals. And it's, it's refreshing to hear, I, I, I don't know what else to say other than thank you, buddy.
I can always, uh, as you're talking through that, I can tell you, no matter what industry I've worked in, or whatever business I'm running, whenever you're looking at averages, it's always amazes me how that bottom percentage just pulls that average down, no matter what you're looking at. And it's like, no matter whatever problem we're always trying to solve, it's like, if you can find a way to pick, fix those bottom five percent or whatever, like, how much that just shoots your whole overall average up, so.
Yeah, there's, there's gotta be some benefit. If we're implementing these new strategies, that last, last, last strategy, or the, the data on the wall, both the low kids are getting that extra enrichment, well, the top kids are also getting that enrichment. You gotta think that those top scores are now gonna.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Bolster a little bit as well.
I like how you're bringing the kids, or, or even the subjectiveness of that, like, and when you're putting it on the wall, are they seeing, like, they're a part of that? Or do they, do you feel that they respond to that, almost like a challenge to help you and them get better? Or how does that, like, correlate as?
It's new this year, it's new for me to share that data with them. Um, and it's new this year for me to have that much data, it's a little extra time, but I think it's gonna pay off in the long run. Um, I can say they definitely notice that data a little bit more, like, we have a test coming up on Thursday this week. So they're paying attention to that data a little bit more. Like, what are the low questions? What are the low standards? I know those are gonna be coming up, I gotta review those. And so by the time June rolls around, we take that exam, I'm looking, all those numbers should be green, higher than eighty-five percent. And that would make me feel comfortable moving into the regions exam, like, we should be pretty good this year.
Great work, guys.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like applauding.
It was so good.
Yeah, that, that, that was great. Okay, um, on to our minutes. Uh, be it resolved that the minutes of November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Um, any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes. Carla, do we have any visitor?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, on to the approval of warrants. Be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, and internal claims, audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Matt. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, John, looks like you did some work with policy eighty-two forty-three, the universal pre-claim.
Yeah, this is the second reading for the board, um, per trying to make it look a little nicer and more simplistic. We just added some bullet points on the enrollment, um, the procedure for enrollment. And, um, obviously included, uh, what was necessary as far as the selection process go. So it's there for your reading. Um, certainly can approve it tonight, or you can pass it on to next month, but, uh, the edits and changes have been made.
Well, what do you, what do you, what do you think, guys? I feel like it's definitely been broken down to be easier to read. Uh, any, any additions at all? Would you guys like to make or changes?
I think it reads well.
Yep. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, thanks, John, for doing this. Uh, I'd like to see if I can get a motion to.
Sure, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve policy, was it eighty-two forty-three?
Yes, sir.
As written?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Uh, any more discussion?
Uh-uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, guys. Um, okay.
Christine, ports?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Um, on the agenda tonight, um, you'll see you have the single audit to approve, that is the, for the federal grants. Um, there was no findings, um, on that, so no corrective action plan is necessary. Um, not on the agenda is the extra classroom one, um, that will be next month. We just received the draft of that last week. Um, we need to review it and come up with a corrective action plan for those items on there. Um, on the agenda also is approval of LaChase as a construction manager firm for the, um, upcoming project. I know, I don't know what you've been made aware, but we sent out two RFPs to seven companies. We got, um, uh, one is just too busy to respond. They said they, they have too much on their plate right now, but, um, we got five really good firms. They're excellent, very reputable. Um, it was a, really a tough, it was a tough decision. It was, there was a lot of discussion about it. So, um, in, in the end, we went with LaChase, and I think it's gonna be a great partnership. Uh, they come with very highly recommended, um, you know, going above and beyond for districts. Their, um, estimation is, is, was one of the key factors for us, especially in a, a period of inflation, and making sure that we get our costs on, on, on target. Can't, I don't wanna have a lot of wiggle room, I want it to be on, on target, so.
Do they have a lot of projects going on right now? How do they manage their workload? It seems like there's a lot of capital projects up the road. There's a ton, there's a ton out there.
And that, and that kind of was a factor for us. Um, you know, there was one of the firms that was one of the highly rated and very highly recommended. I've worked with them before, I thought they were great. Um, I've never had a bad experience with them, but they've got a lot of projects going around, around in the area. Um, and that kind of was a concern for us as well. Um, don't want them to be overextended. LaChase, um, they're just such a big firm. Um, they didn't have a lot going on locally, so we're, they're really trying to get into this area a little bit more. Uh, so we thought, um, and one of the fir, one of the districts that they, we got a great recommendation from, um, York, um, spoke very, very highly of them, and again, took a chance on them, and is super happy, and said they'll never look back.
And part of the interview is, they, they sent us their team that would be assigned to this project. And one of the things that we looked at is the number of people here. Um, they, you know, they guaranteed us, you know, two people here, they have a field superintendent and a project manager. And then they also have, you know, a part-time support staff that would help Christine with change orders and, and things like that. The one thing that caught my attention was their estimation department. They have their own estimation department, they have a fantastic handle on the supplies, the materials, what things should cost. They have all of these analytics that I don't really think the other project managers and, and construction companies have. And moving forward into this big project, you know, I, I, you know, we've kind of questioned the price, and, and I know that you have too, questioned the price of, what is this gonna be in a year and a half? You know, what is a, a, a new community stadium? What, what is this going to be? And to know that they are on our side, dotting their i's, crossing, you know, their t's, um, I think will help us, you know, get this project, you know, like you said, done, done right, and, and done in, in the best financial, you know, possible way. So, um, very impressed with them, very knowledgeable, come highly recommended. Um, and, uh, we're looking forward to, to working with their team. I think they'll work very well with S E I and work together. S E I has worked with them before, and S E I has highly recommended, um, you know, their firm and their, and their team with us, so. And they, and they've done, you know, fields before. I mean, a lot of the project managers have done classrooms and, you know, instructional spaces. But we also wanted to make sure that we have someone that has, has done a full, you know, multipurpose, you know, field and stadium, and has worked with the artificial turf companies, and they know them both, so.
Anything else, Christine?
Um, yep, so on, up, um, on the board, you'll see, uh, just a brief update on our federal stimulus funds. I kind of wanted to give you an, an update where we shook, where we ended up with June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, where we're at for this year, and what we're gonna have at, um, going into next year. Uh, because these grants end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-fourth, so everything needs to be encumbered and then expensed within three months after that. So, um, as an update, in the original amounts, we had three point four million dollars. Um, we have expended through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, two point two million dollars of that. So we have about one point two million left to use before September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um, we have, we are on target to spend nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars this year. Um, and I kind of wanna dive into a, a couple of little ones, because it's, it, that's kind of notable. Um, that, that, it, so anything that's got a gray on the right is done. So, will be, or will be done at that point in time. So ARP S R three is still outstanding. That's that slush bucket kind of one, that it didn't really have a lot of restrictions around it, like the other, like the after-school, or summer, or the learning loss, um, was very restrictive. This had some wiggle room in it. So one of the things that we were paying for out of that was the, um, H V A C project for the fitness center. Um, so we're on target to spend two hundred and, of that, two hundred and ninety-five, a hundred and thirty-five of it alone is for the, the fitness center, um, work that's being done. And then a hundred and sixty of that is, um, salaries and benefits. And again, as we talked before, I've already started budgeting some of those back in. So I've got some that have been in the budget as of this year, and then next year, the rest of the balance of, of, of those, um, salaries are coming into the bu, of the general fund budget. Um, the ARP, I'm gonna jump down a few, the ARP learning loss, um, we're, I look on target to finish that one this year as well. Uh, there's five hundred and fifty-eight thousand to be spent on that, and most of that, um, is salaries and benefits. Um, and again, we, we did about half of that is already back in general fund. Fifty-five thousand of that, five fifty-eight, was spent on the T C I training that was done over the summer. Um, ARP summer, which is that next line up from there, um, we're on target. Uh, we spent about sixty-one thousand, six twenty-two, that's done, obviously, so that's a, that's a accurate number. That leaves us eighty thousand going into next year for the summer. So, um, we're gonna have to get on Matt and Lynn to ramp up your summer programs and spend that, spend the rest of that on that summer program. Um, the ARP after-school learning, um, if we stay on trend, we're gonna end up with a lot of money on that and, in, in the bucket left after this year. Um, last year we only spent thirty-five thousand dollars of the af, for the after-school learning. Um, this year, if we spend the same as last, we're gonna end up with about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars left. So we're looking at, you know, I don't want to leave the money on the table, so we're trying to get creative. I don't know, Connie and Lynn might be able to speak.
Just really restrictive pots like Christine was talking about. So you look at that and you think, well, how could you have so much? But what you're allowed to spend it on is such a narrow focus, so Christine's right, Matt and Lynn, and we're going to have to get creative.
Is that the hands-on, in-person, like the adventure clubs and things like that?
Right. It has to be a high dosage tutoring and, yes.
So it has to have some type of enrichment?
Correct.
And it has to be hands-on?
Correct.
Correct.
Hopefully includes vocabulary.
Yeah, right. And data analysis.
There you go.
Well, and I think some of it, and I don't know if the, if, Matt, you can speak to this about.
We have recognized that what Christine has made, you know, there's a large pool of money left. So one of the things we've noticed about after-school tutoring, the sixth graders show up and drove. They show up whether they have to be or not. So we're going to separate our sixth graders, hire another tutor, and have that tutoring take place in a different way. And then, so we've added staff just because the pot of money is there, but.
And do you get participation? Is that, I mean?
You know, you always want more. Um, we, we really try and shake the trees and get the kids who, who need to be here. But, you know, sometimes that's a struggle.
So as a team, as a team, we've already talked about possibly doing a budget amendment to maybe purchase some supplies or materials that can go along with tutoring, um, that could potentially be used further into the future, even though, you know, we expend it now.
That's, that's the question.
Something that can be there as a re season.
Buy materials that are going to.
Nice fine line we walk.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If you see the, the application and the, the, should I say, the evidence and what you can only use this money for, you know, there's, there's a, there's a lot there, um, and I'd be very surprised if.
That's the bucket that was the hardest for us, was the after-school.
Because I would imagine this is unique to us, right?
Right. I mean, we're paying for the after-school tutoring, the Saturday tutoring, you know, we've upped the, you know.
Right.
The entice, yeah, and the, and the rate for teachers to, to provide that, which, which is great. You know, we've looked at certain programs, you know, the summer school, this, you know, the adventure academies, things like that. That's all coming out. But we only have, you know, one more year left, so we're going to have to get very.
And then it's gone, right?
Creative.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let them spend it.
And trust me, we've been very creative with the other stuff to try and get it, get it spent on. In fact, I think, um, you know, we're looking to do. In, we're planning, uh, even in one of the, I think it's the learning loss bucket of that five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. A lot of, a lot of that is, um, most of that is salaries, but there is an element of that too that's still, I think that's where we're getting some curriculum materials as well that are out of there. So, you know, we're trying to find things that, um, we might have otherwise pulled in, put in the general fund that might have be in the language that's allowable in that bucket. And that was one that had, you know, had some room in it, but it's this after-school bucket that's been, been the biggest struggle for us.
What's the connection to the general fund?
So, so there are things that are like, um, so how do we, like, we assign.
Like a curricular resource. So when you, when we did these, we had to like, basically, unless vendors all had to be evidence-based, you had to be able to prove, right? You had research-based resources, but they were curricular resources. And so there's certain names in this pot of this narrative that we have, and there's some things that had been bought from general fund that Christine can, if they fall under those.
Those names, then you can, and then you can hold from there.
Correct. We'll just reali-, reallocate those expenses to this.
See, but I mean, like.
Yeah, you shift.
Be careful, because you've got to make sure it matches what we, yes.
Right. And, and I don't know, I can't analyze the, the stuff, whether it is or not. You don't want me looking at it, but they, so we're working as a team to see how we can get creative to, to use all that money up and make sure that we've, you know, we've taken advantage of this. But I think we've done, you know, pretty good so far.
As far as auditing your process of that, does, do you have to, how do you get your approval of that? Do you get it after the money is spent?
Um, so, so there was an in-, an initial application that went in with a detail of how we planned to spend it, but there was also a budget narrative with it that went along with it. So your spending items had to fit into your budget narrative. Once they've approved that plan, then we kind of rolled with it. So any of the purchases that we've made so far have really aligned with those, those applications. As you go along and you spend it, you send them a, you just send them a request for funds as you go, and, and you basically are, well, John's attesting to the fact that we've spent this money according to the guidance on, on this. There, the midterm, we had to give them some reporting, um, not on all of the grants, which was, it was just an odd reporting request, the way they did it, but we're up for what we have, um, there's different levels of review. We're not the, 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 the deepest dive.
Last one.
Yeah, we, we signed up for the last one because I wanted to see what everybody else experienced and, and what the plan was. But the state has actually, they've done webinars where superintendents, um, business officials have come on and talked about what their experience was with that level of reporting back to the state and what their best practices have been, which has been very helpful. Jenna and, has been outlining and getting everything organized, um, in the files to make sure we have everything formed. And what they found is the best practice is just having everything in a Google Drive, copies of invoices, copies of, um, reports out of your payroll system. All of that stuff organized into a Google Drive by bucket, you know, salaries, cons-, you know, supplies, contractual expenditures, benefits, that, those, um, the backup documentation to all that, sharing it with them at the state. And a lot of them have said that the process has been made much easier by doing that. So we're, we're already gathering all that information. It's a practice I used to do in, when I was on Medina with the gr-, the regular grants, Title I grants, Title II, UPK, six eleven, six nineteen, those standard grants that we always had. It's a practice that I'm used to, I was used to with that. So we've kind of already started that with these, although it's been a little, a bigger of a bucket of money to deal with, but, um, but we have it. We're already in process on that. So, yeah, I think we're, um, June.
Do a lot of districts ever get denied on anything, like that they thought they'd be able to spend money on a game?
I don't know. I don't know.
I want to say, you know, we'll get questioned, and then you just, you know, provide a, a different rationale. You know, they may have some questions for you. You may not provide enough evidence, or, you know, they may come back and say, you know, we're not understanding. I have yet to hear of a district being denied, um, you know, so they do, they do work with you in, in trying to, to spend this money, so.
So.
Or they'll tell you that it, that should have been in this category and not that category or something like that, but I've never been.
Right.
Told that districts have been denied.
They, they, they literally, I put together, um, when we, in part of the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar bucket, one of the things that we did was some repairs, um, to the pools, and they literally had me break the sand out into supplies and, and this other piece into equipment, and then the labor into, into contractual, instead of taking the, the one bill that had all of them in it and just putting it to contractual, which we would normally do, they literally did a deep dive into it and, and gave us that feedback and told us how to do it, but they helped us. Our reviewer was wonderful and very helpful, so. Um, I, I do have to say, they've, they've been, as frustrating as it was, the application process in the beginning, I think everyone was like, Darren Headley's like, oh, my God, what do I do? I do have to say, we, we had a good reviewer and really helped us through the process. They've been very, very good at answering our questions as we go along, which is kind of surprising.
So what does this impact on the budget development for the following year? Like, how much of this is already? Like, how much of this is cooked into, like, salaries right now?
So, so, so right now, we have, um, hang on, let me look at my notes. I've got probably, I think in the, the ARP S R three, um, we have a hundred and sixty thousand this year. Of that, two ninety-five, a hundred and sixty is salaries. I've already got half of that baked in. To the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Next year, it'll be a, half of that'll be a bump. The ARP learning loss, that's a bigger bucket. That's five hundred thousand. I probably have about not quite a half in, in that, I'm going to say. But the rest of that will come back in, and we talked about that. When we decided to add a math specialist, add a reading specialist, we thought down the road that we would have attrition to help absorb those positions back in, because that's one of the plans. When you apply for these grants, they had to say, how are you going to sustain this afterwards? Um, and that's, that was one of our explanations to them. So, um, you know, we're, obviously, that was going to be one of my final bullet points, is we're deep into budget discussions already. We're kind of ahead of the game, I think, a little bit this year. Um, we started about mid-month, um, last month. And, um, you know, we're still going to be meeting over the next month. We have our first meeting. So usually, we do the instructional, um, presentation in February. We've actually moved that back to be January. Made a little more sense. You don't have the, the governor's budget for when we typically do the January presentation, so it's really hard to gauge, um, on the revenue side of things. So we're going to bump the instructional side of it forward. Um, so we've been working with the administrators already. Matt and Lynn and I and Amy are meeting over, um, Christmas break, when things are quiet and hopefully quiet, and, and get some, get some of that done, but, um, we're on target for having some good information in January. But we are looking at, you know, we're looking at staffing. We're looking at enrollment. We'll, we'll have some, some good data, um, from Forecast Five Analytics to try and help us with some of our decision-making.
There's one thing I should, I probably should ask you ahead of time, uh, but the eight point six, the amendment to general fund budget, Christine, it's the.
Okay.
I, I, I can read it, um, but I, there's.
That's okay.
Disconnect between myself reading it and understanding it.
Sure.
I can't make sense of this.
No, it's no problem. So when you have an unexpected revenue, so say, say you, and, and in this case, what this one is, is we have to transfer this to a debt service reserve. So to do that, um, we have to ex-, you expend it out of your general fund to, and you, it, it's like an inter-fund transfer. So on the general fund, it's an expense, in your debt service fund, it's a revenue, okay? So you have, when you transfer that, you have, it's, it's an unexpected, so I, if, if I had, so that's twenty-five thousand dollars that would have been a cut out of our two point, twenty-four million dollar budget if I had to do that transfer. We didn't have that transfer budgeted for. So that's an unbudgeted revenue and an unbudgeted, unanticipated. So it's like, for example, say you crashed your, crashed a bus, and all of a sudden you had to spend.
I've crashed into a bus before, and that was many years ago.
And you, and all of a sudden, you had to spend two hundred thousand dollars on a bus, and you didn't budget to buy a bus, but that's two hundred thousand dollars out of your budget that you would, had planned to spend for something else. You're going to get insurance money back for it, but you, you need to be able to put on a purchase order to, to do that. So you, you have to increase your expenditure line. It's just like the, uh, the six-one-one program. So we had additional revenues coming in. Correct, correct. So you would, what, what you would do, um, so we're just, what we're doing is we're recording the revenue, the A twenty-four oh one, which is interest, and then recording the expense. So it's increasing your revenue and increasing your expenses.
Yeah.
And they offset.
Okay. Actually, I'm sorry. I didn't ask earlier.
Nope, nope. That's okay. Budget amendments don't come along very often. We've had a couple of them just because of the six-one-one program and, and this, and.
This is our second one.
Right, right. Maybe we won't have one for a few years.
Yeah, I don't feel like we've had a ton of them. All right, sorry, Christine.
Nope, that's okay.
I had the same question, too.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Well, it's like when you have one of those unanticipated things, you have to be able to expend to replace something or expend to move it to.
Is there a fee associated with that as well? For taking that out?
Nope, they, that was.
Some districts just take it to interest revenue and just don't do anything with it. And then, talking with our fiscal advisors and our auditors, I asked, I said, there, this, shouldn't this be used for debt service? And they said, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So.
Thanks for the explanations there, Christine. I, I, um, do you have anything else, Mike?
No.
Okay. John, you're up.
All right. Um, well, first and foremost, I want to thank the OA community, uh, and the residents who came out to vote on our capital project last Monday. Your support from, uh, myself and the board and the district is greatly appreciated. And this work inside and out is definitely going to be a game changer for this district and community over the next couple of years. So, so thank you for your support. Um, this next year, we're going to be working, um, in all areas with the design phases. We'll be getting stakeholders' input, the board's input, um, the people who actually work in the classrooms and in those structural spaces, along with, you know, our athletic director and coaches. We'll get everybody's input. And I'm just excited to move forward, uh, this next year in, um, making this a, a top-notch campus. I mean, we're, you know, we've, we've made many changes over the last eighteen months, and, uh, like I said, this is going to be a, a game changer. I want to have some congratulations to Paige over there, um, on her first-place Povault victory and finish. At the, uh, it was in Nazareth. Uh, there was a indoor track and field meet over there. I want to say there was about forty-five schools that participated. And, you know, for the indoor track, uh, these are some pretty, pretty good schools, pretty large schools. And you finished first with a Povault of eleven feet. Is that your best? Is that your personal record?
Uh, I've gotten thirteen, not at a meet, but at, uh, USATF, like, so USA Track and Field, just not at a school sanctioned meet, yeah.
Well, that's awesome. Congratulations, and, uh, we're, you know, um, excited to hear what else you can, uh, do this season, so congratulations. And I just want to wish everybody, our OA community, um, our teachers, our staff, our administrators and, and the board a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and, uh, a well-deserved break from all the craziness and, uh, hope everybody has an enjoyable time with their family and friends. That's all I got.
Thanks, Tom. Um, Amy, what do you think to report, Simon?
Um, not a lot, but, um, in special ed, we are now full speed into our annual reviews and our reavails, um, our I E Ps and five oh fours. So those are keeping us very busy, um, but they are going along very, very nicely, and I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing, so. That's where we are at.
Thanks, Amy. Um, Connie, what do you have, Simon?
Well, data, data, data. We love the data conversations. I, actually, I love having the staff present because Matt, Lynn and I, over the last couple of years, really have been spending a lot of time talking about data, sharing data. And it, it's nice to see it help move us forward. Um, one of the things, and I'm going to jump back to last month's meeting. I know there was a question about the math results, and we know, we've known since I've been here that we needed to focus on those, but we chose as a district that ELA was at first place. You listen to both these guys. We need to build that standard. They've got to be able to read. So we've got that nice and solid. Um, on Thursday, we actually are starting a curriculum review process for that elementary at this point. So last June, when the scores didn't get released until after school started, but in June, they released the questions and if they were right or wrong, basically, is the data. So Lynn and I at the elementary really dove into that data. We met with all the teachers before they left. We did it with ELA as well, and they made goals, right? Based on my data in my class, what do I need to work on? And we laughed because we were talking about the last, 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 which is spiral review, which for many of our teachers was one of the things they realized, I need to spiral this unit back more because I teach it here, and then we get to assessment and they have, you know, some struggles with it. So anyways, we took that data and then, um, our math and lit teams are three through eight. So all of that data also went to our math and lit chairs, who then, at the beginning of the school year, it was before we even had kids, they had half-day meetings, and they did the trends for the data and analyzing where, um, we needed to put a little bit more emphasis. And with math, um, one of the things that they had decided, they talked about it last year, uh, elementary in particular, wanting to move to something a little bit more structured. Lynn and I decided not to move last year with that for many reasons, solidifying the rest of our reading, but also, we knew we had new assessments coming up. So we got through these assessments, looked at the data, and on Thursday, we will meet with, it's a math team. There's one from representative from kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. And they have looked at different curriculum that they think we should consider, and Lynn and I have looked at a couple of curriculums. I've been meeting, I've been Zoom calls left and right to get vendors to actually do a recording, because I want the teachers to have the opportunity to see what the vendor means. Like, I don't want to just hand a teacher a text and say, okay, we're going to review it. Here's the checklist. I want them to hear from the vendor what their intention is. So we're going to start that process. They have all the videos now. We will meet. There's a, uh, very lengthy, although I think thorough and necessary review process we're going to have for each one. And then we're going to narrow it down to a couple, and then those teachers are going to come up with all the nitty-gritty questions, and we're going to get the vendors back, and we're going to talk to them, and, um, hopefully, at the end of that process, there'll be a decision to maybe move forth with something a little bit more structured and unified in the elementary. Up here, we'll have to take a look at that at some point as well, but as always, and I've said this before, we really have to start at the elementary to get ourselves building up. So that's happening Thursday. So that's, there's been a, a lot of work behind it, and hopefully, we can follow the same trajectory that we have in reading and see some good successes after we get ourselves going.
Keep us posted with that. I'd be very curious to hear what vendors you go through or what programs that you're looking into.
Yeah, it, uh, it's going to be an eye-opening experience, for sure. Our teachers know areas that they want to really focus on, and they feel that as a district, and we've identified them, like, throughout the whole district, the standards that we know, it's not just the elementary, it's middle, it's even up into high, that we need to work on. Like you heard Bernie talk about, we've identified things in ELA that we need to work on as a district. There's some similar things in the math, um, thread that we're hoping we can get rectified.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, once you get to that one, you know, one or two programs, or whatever you'd like to call them, more, more structured resources, I would really, I'd push to get you guys into classrooms in other districts to see that.
Oh, Lynn's already been visiting, and actually, the vendors have given me local schools, so depending on what we narrow down, we'll, we'll do more.
Schools that are. Schools that are, that are dominating.
So that's, that's the plan.
That's great. It's a good plan. Thank you, Connie. Okay, JC, I think you're up next, or am I jumping around here? I'm forgetting the order.
Um, we had our last, our second lockdown of the year was Monday. It completes our requirement to have two done before the winter break. Things again went very smooth. We shifted around which admin or which building's unlocking to keep ourselves a little fresh on how geographically spread out the buildings are, making sure our language is consistent. We've also, because our systems are proving so thorough and consistent, we've been able to take, scale back some of the redundancies we had built in. So some of the people who were doing things that were extra steps, we've been able to take those out to make our responses quicker. Those are good things that are a positive consequence of all the Cisco work and tying our system to the call-out network. And then on the horizon, we'll be looking at taking and tying our phone system into the call boxes coming into the building to again streamline and fully expand our capability with the Cisco phone system. It's such a robust platform. We've only still scratched the surface, working with our, our tech and custodial departments to get the most effective use out of that. Oh, good thing. Very smooth. We were locked down and back up and moving in about ten minutes. So it was very quick.
It was funny, JC, we were at a Paige Turner's competition and all of the Oakfield families' phones started going off and we lost. And we wouldn't have lost if all of those phones, no, I'm kidding. We, we, it was, it was a tight race. I, I won't blame it on that, but it definitely threw all the kid, no, I'm, it was just funny. It was very funny to hear. So thanks for being on top of that.
I actually have a question regarding the lockdown system. Is there a way, and this might be something for you, Rob, when we get those phone calls as parents, the school phone number comes up, but is there a way to identify that to a certain department, that phone call? So like if you are busy and you think you're getting a phone call from the nurse or you think you're getting a phone call from a teacher, is there a way for it to say lockdown specific?
Oh, so the actual, the caller ID.
Yes.
I'd have to check with Parents Square to see, because that's coming from Parents Square from their platform.
Okay.
I'd have to see, because it's the same for all the alerts coming through as a smart alert. And at the moment, we're only using smart alerts for lockdowns, but if we decide to use it for something else, snow day closure or something, we wouldn't want that to be caller ID'd as lockdown.
Okay.
So that might be, I can bring that up.
Yeah, yeah, it was just something, you know, I, I work with patients, so I, I'm with people and if.
Same thing, Natalie. I was like, should I answer it? Is it the nurse?
I, I was in the hospital, I'm like looking at my phone thinking, oh gosh, is this the nurse calling for a sick kid? Should I pick it up?
Now, did you not pick it up? Or does it go to voicemail? Or does it record?
It does record. But I've also run into the issue where my mailbox is full or that the phone hangs up and then I'm left to be like, well, is this something I should call the school back? And who do I ask for? Do I ask for high school? Do I ask for elementary school?
Yeah.
It kind, that phone call kinda gets lost.
Parents Square will know if they were unsuccessful leaving a voicemail.
Okay.
That's why you're gonna get an email, a text message and an app push.
Okay.
In an event like that, you're getting all of those things. And that's why they call it a smart message. It's looking to see if it was successful with that channel. If it failed, it falls to another.
You got more than just a phone call, correct?
So we get the phone call and it's, the text comes through and the Parents Square, then, and it's done.
The text came through late.
Yeah. All the phone experts.
Wait, you get more than just a phone call, correct?
Yes, but it was later. It wasn't all the same time.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I love it. Just letting us know immediately when the drill starts, when the drill ends. It just eases all of the parents' concerns.
You should have told the other parents of the other districts, see, look at how communication. See, look at how our district communicates.
I have a slight bullet. That was killing us.
That was just taking it to us, hey? Staring pepper kids.
Oh, did it? Oh, okay. I just heard the OA lockdowns.
It just kept repeating and then finally sort of spit it out, at least for my message, when it was over with.
Oh, the robocall?
Yeah.
Rob, your first.
Sometimes you get them back to back, like it's like the first one dropped or something and then they, they called you right back. And I've had that where you got two of them. I'm just always glad when it's not Mr. Peterson when I answer.
We had to record a Spanish version of what I said, so Fady and the district helped us with that. So for those that have identified the primary language is Spanish, that actually puts that language out.
That's super cool.
That's really neat.
I want to know.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm very focused here. Mr. Peterson, what do you have?
In the time I have, I think I want to give you a thanks and give you an update. A thanks to Jennifer Ritter-Pritchett, who is gonna be leaving this center. She's taken her position elsewhere. It's kind of on short notice, so we're gonna look to fill her position. That's where the update comes in. So thank you to Jennifer for her service. She's actually a real professional. I love working with her. She's a hard worker and she'll be hard to replace. I think Sarah, please to share that we have a lot of interest in that position. We have six interviews coming up this Thursday. On paper, I think we're gonna be able to find someone who can fill that role and we'll be able to, hopefully, the goal is to hit the ground running right after the break with that person. So we also have interest, and we have it prior to now, with our open, still at make it, reading literacy specialist position after moving towards this anti the sixth grade classroom. So we have some interest in that. We'll be interviewing for that on Thursday as well. And I know it's short notice and you know, we're all very, very busy, but our interview team, there's also for a member representation from the board. So if you're interested in serving on that, it's really an all-day thing on Thursday from roughly seven thirty to three, if you're interested. So there's the update.
Thank you.
Rob?
Just yesterday, we had our friends from Edutech come out. There was about nine people. And our Edutech Boise region is about a two and a half hour span. So they took the roughly two-hour drive from Newark area to come this way. They like to visit onsite every once in a while. So they service forty-seven districts in the region. And that's significant because they said out of all forty-seven, Oakfield is at the top of their list for the easiest to manage, but also not because they don't have tech. They have a lot of tech. So they said, when we look at it, you have the phone system already. You have your servers and core switches that were replaced. You have the PA system, your this system, that system, Paper Cut, Toshiba. You have all these different things, but yet we don't need to be like, be in onsite and troubleshooting because your stuff just works. So, you know, they're, they claim basically it's like a well-oiled machine. And they said, we don't have those big, you know, $200,000 needed to replace all the core switches. Like, that's not on our horizon for maybe three, four, five years down the road. So, you know, access points are just on this year. Big-ticket items are kind of already done for us. So Christine and I will work and you'll see more of this next month on the spreadsheet. It kind of shows the, kind of from when I retired in twenty thirty-five-ish, six or sevenish, and like all the way down that road, basically our pre-K students now, they will likely be seniors by the time I'm retiring. So on this spreadsheet, Christine and I have columns of all those years. And it shows like this year, we need, I need $200,000 to do the core switches. But this year, we need $30,000 for a server. So that's a huge difference between the two. So we're looking at what else can we move around so that year to year to year, it's kind of an even number and not just going up and down and up and down. So you'll see more of that next month. But I think it was good to hear that from Bosse's because they have the perspective of working with forty-seven districts. They said, we're in a good position of stuff we bought and, you know, we don't have big-ticket items coming up in the next year or two or three.
And we have you to help us.
Good job, Rob.
That says a lot for you.
All fun stuff.
So you're sorry to the chain link of how many days you have left?
I, I haven't, no, because I, I don't even think about that now, but.
But if you want it done, my daughters will do it. That's what they're constantly, they're doing linked chains.
But I think it's fun to say like, this year, like those might be the graduating seniors like by the time I retire.
Yeah, we literally took the plan out to like twenty forty-one.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's great.
Some things we're not buying for like eight years for every fall.
I can imagine.
Rob also presented it at our home district on Parents Square. I heard that went very well. They wanted to, you know, pick his brain.
Small group and they said, we have twenty-five admins. Can you come to one of our huge admin meetings and present there and convince them that, you know, Parents Square is the way to go, not Remine and CSaw and Cazgojo and all those other things. So they were nervous because they were like, we've been using CSaw for years. You're gonna tell us we can't use it? Well, you're gonna migrate. Because, you know, and the big thing was, what about the training? What about the rollout? I said, we did this in March of 2020. Do you remember what happened in March of 2020? I didn't have teachers face-to-face to train. I didn't have parents come in and train them. They just used it. And we just rolled it out with our fingers crossed. And it's now like one of our top three platforms that we use. So there's proof in the pudding that you don't have to be fearful to jump into it because it's very easy to learn. If you know how to use social media in a sense, you know, even if you don't, you're, you're gonna get the text messages anyways. So you'll be in the loop and you'll know what's going on.
Thanks, Rob.
Stia, anything tonight from the CSEA? Mrs. Bowski?
Um.
You're just here.
I'm just here.
I'm taking it in.
But I'm glad to have it hopefully finished.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah. Come on, hold on a minute. And then Paige?
Yeah, so I'll kind of start with the little homework that.
Oh, Katrina, hold on a second. I'm sorry. No, I, OATAs, get right over you. People are kicking me. Sorry, Paige, hold on. Take it easy. Katrina, you're a wonderful person. Seven one six. Sorry.
It's okay. We don't have a lot anyway. We're in, you know, survival mode with the Christmas vacation coming up. The kids have been good though. High school, you know, we've heard snow coming and white out today. So that was a fun day up here. Christine and the business part of it with our new contract, everybody's really, and our membership, sorry. No, we're having now. Okay, good. You know, it really went well. It's, it, we've got pay changes. There was like hardly any snafus, which was great with all the work that was done ahead of time. So everything's going good. So that's about it though.
Thank you, sorry for that. I get, I get excited sometimes.
Now Paige.
Paige, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll start with last time Mr. Fiskis kind of gave me some homework for where people would prefer the breaks. And I asked.
Yes.
Some students and some, I tried to get to the middle school and the high school and then just asking some of like the teachers and everything. And it was kind of all spread out. There wasn't like a universal, like we want it here. A lot of people had mentioned, like the most popular was to move it to Easter, have extra two days at Easter or Christmas. A lot of people didn't mind the February break, but they said they'd rather have it somewhere else. They didn't really say where they'd rather have it. They just kind of said that Christmas or Easter might be better. And then there were some people that said that they just really don't care and they would take two days anywhere. It doesn't matter where they are. Yeah, so that was basically what I had. Easter was definitely the popular choice to have an extra two days.
Have a couple of extra days on the spring break?
Yeah, the spring break. And then just kind of some stuff going on. Sports are going well. We've seen a lot of stuff with the swimming and then basketball is doing really well. Some athletes on track are also doing very well. Student council has snow coming, coming up. So we've got that this week. We've got the Assembly Friday. They also went down to the elementary and I was part of that for the kindergarten Christmas party. So we just kind of had an hour or so with the little kindergarteners and just had like a story time and decorating cookies and everything. And we're almost to the five weeks. So that's kind of just trying to get through it till the holidays. It's a little hard, but we're almost there. Only a few days left and that's really it.
Wonderful job, Paige. Thank, thank you.
Just to give a board just a quick update on, on what Paige said. This Thursday, we have our superintendent's meeting in Elba. We are told to bring our draft calendars. I know Kevin and Genesee Galley-Bosse's will be there. This is our, our calendar meeting. So we'll try to align everything. So it's my hope at the January meeting, I can bring just a handful of drafts to you. Like I said, there's not much wiggle room, but there's, you know, one or two days that we can play with. You know, I can provide a full February break. I could provide, you know, two or three days at February break and put those days elsewhere. I do know it does seem that a lot of the schools on draft form seem to be going with a full two weeks at Christmas because January first falls on a Wednesday. So you would return on a Thursday, Friday. It looks like they're using two days from other places to have a full two weeks. I'll provide you a handful of drafts, but I'll see what the majority of the schools are, are doing on Thursday and I'll get back to you in January. There's no rush on that. So.
Okay, thanks, John. Thanks, Karen. Paige. On to new business. Be it resolved that items eight point two through eight point six be approved by a consent agenda. Can I get a motion moved? Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eight, seven. You all right down there, Maria? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. I think it's Maria. Okay, so I'm.
I just tried not to touch it.
That's it.
All right, so on to eight point seven approval of the capital project vote. Be it resolved that the results of the capital project vote be accepted. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Let's say, just that I think with as close of as a vote as it was, we owe it to those community members that did vote no on this to kind of, as we're going through the final design and stuff, just kind of, try to figure out what their concerns were and make sure that we are being thoughtful of that. And, you know, to me, it was basically a fifty-fifty vote, you know, and not just that we, we owe that to the community to really kind of maybe try to understand what those hesitations were and just try to take that into thought as we're going to the final design stages and moving ahead with this.
I think it's a great point, Pete. It was very, super close, super close. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Pete. Eight, approval of construction management company. Be it resolved that La Chaise Construction Services LLC be the construction manager for the upcoming capital improvement project 2023. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eight point nine approval of CSEA tentative agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the terms and conditions of the tentative agreement retroactive to July first, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I just, I just want to say thank you to the CSEA for ratifying this on Friday. And I also like to say thank you for Jackie for sitting in on those meetings. I appreciate you being there. It's a lot of time to spend at these meetings and your support, I think, was probably much appreciated from administrative standpoint and the CSEA standpoint.
Yes, makes sure.
And John, Christine, thank you for, for, for working hard to get this agreement to, to be ratified as well as the CSEA for, for voting on Friday. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communications, Kyle, I didn't see much over here for communications. Okay. Discussion or roundtable discussion? There has been a discussion about, well, not a discussion, but there's, we've had a flux of requests for an increase, a request for our facilities, uh, usage. And I think right now, we're gonna continue the, the agreement that we've had. And I think it's a discussion that we're gonna come back to towards the end of this, this year and talk about the unexpected increase in volume opposed to what it was just a year ago. And then we'll have to talk about what is it costing in our district to provide the, the facilities to be open and, you know, kind of maybe working out some kind of policy in that we'll have a way to request the usage of perhaps a cost embedded and then the expectation, expectations of how the, the facilities are gonna be used. I don't know if anybody wants to add to that.
So currently, Justin, yeah, Christine and I updated what we needed as far as insurance. We updated the terms and conditions and our expectations of what we need the outside organizations to do, you know, on a Sunday, especially if there isn't staff here. We've talked with the athletic director. We've talked to Jordan. Yes, we will, you know, provide the facilities for free. We won't charge anybody. But I do believe moving forward, just because of the demand and, you know, what the events that are taking place, you know, we do have to make sure that the building is locked up at night, that it, that it is somewhat clean. We don't need someone here every minute that somebody is, you know, an outside organization is here. But at least at the end of the night, if you're traipsing through the hallways with, you know, salt on your shoes and, and things like that, we want to make sure that, you know, come Monday morning, you know, the facilities are clean. So we do have. So we do have to bring in, you know, some buildings and grounds people. But moving forward, you know, for, you know, the rest of this winter and into the spring, we'll continue as is. But I do see, you know, over the summer, moving into next year, that we'll have to get a little tighter and a little more structured on, on how to have our facilities be used, you know, especially kind of on an off day like a Sunday. And then again, I think that'll set the tone for moving into this next capital project with our facilities being what they, they might be and will be as far as, you know, the football and the soccer and the track and even our baseball and softball diamonds. I can see more outside organizations wanting to use our facilities. And so we'll have to come up with a real good process and procedure for allowing that to happen, so. But in the meantime, we'll just continue to push forward and, you know, obviously, our end goal is we do want our campus open. We do want our community and our kids and our parents to be able to use these facilities. But, you know, over the last few weeks, it's, it's getting to be a lot. But we'll keep moving forward and figure out something, you know, into, in the next fall.
Yeah, I think the last meeting, when we talked about the synthetic softball and baseball fields, I asked the question of will we be more apt or less apt to allow organizations to use these facilities? And the quick answer was more, but I guess I still wonder about that a little bit because of the maintenance costs of some of what we will have. And like you, like you mentioned, John, there could be a higher demand. There'll be plenty of time to talk about what's important to our district when we're allowing outside organizations. I'd start with, we want our kids to be well represented on these teams that are using our facilities. That would be a big one for me. So as we discuss this in the coming years, we'll want to make sure that when there's competition for our facilities, that we're making sure we're putting our students first.
Absolutely.
And then there's equity within the requests, because I, I mean, it goes back to when we had those dance, the dance that, you remember that, Jeflin? There was two competing dance. You guys remember that?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it was in Oakfield and, yeah.
And we ended up going to a Potavia person, I believe, opposed to.
Well, I think the board asked that the Oakfield dance studio be given maybe a little higher priority because I think the case is made that, just like what I just said right there, that they represent more of our students.
Right, and so it's, that seemed to be, it seemed to be a situation that was bigger than it needed to be and I don't want to get back into something like that again. And I don't know about you, but an outside organization that isn't tied to Oakfield will use it like a rental. And I don't know how you guys are with rental vehicles. I know how I've been in my life, right?
And the bus.
Yeah, yeah, I hit a bus too. It's Mrs. Luxon's mom that I hit years ago. She didn't even know I hit her. What a mistake that was. But anyways. Silly. I just think that like when you're using somebody else's facility, you don't necessarily use it as if it's your own. And I want to make sure that we're really locked tight about this. As Pete just said, this is a close vote and I don't want to see other teams coming in here trashing our facilities or not, or us not getting something from it, even if it is Oakfield based. We should, we should at some point see some kind of, if they're coming to use our facilities and it's costing us to staff these, we should see something in return to an extent.
Even the, you know, the organizations that might even be, you know, field-based organization, but then you're bringing in teams from other areas and you know that those people aren't going to care. You know, and I know even on the turf, I mean, like you go to Medina, you're not allowed sports drinks, you're not allowed gum, any of that stuff out on the field because of the turf issues.
Well, and it comes down to even the proper footwear and the proper, you know, those things are all just huge considerations. What we're considering is a district and if you're not really caring about that or even knowledgeable about it, it's going to be harder to abide by that.
But it's resetting, setting the expectation and how do we, what's our new?
And that's really, I think, what it is. It's an expectation, one from the programs, the coaches, the whatever boards that these programs may have. And then it has to trickle down to the kids and just respect where you're going. You know, I like to think as I get older, I respect rental stuff a little bit more than I did as a kid. But, you know, it goes really from, those adults have to put that on. I mean, that's, that's part of, I guess, us in education and how to treat people's stuff, you know? And if they're not, we gotta be quick to get them home, you know, even if they're Oakfield, you know, whoever it is. You know, it has to be respected and it should be now. I mean, if, if we know that there's a group that leaves the gym full of water bottles and garbage and whatever, you know, it doesn't take much for that last adult or last kid to walk around and pick everything up. Like every dugout we leave, you leave it better than you found it. Every sideline we leave, we leave it better than we found it. It's, it's just something you teach the kids and, you know, we teach our own kids and you teach everybody that's on your team. It's, it's not that difficult to make it look, you know, better than when you found it. You know, if there's garbage there when you walk in, there shouldn't be when you walk out, you know, even if it's not your garbage. You know, and I think that, I'll say as a district, really just need to reinforce that. And, you know, especially if there's more than enough people that want to use our stuff, you know? So, you know, if the people coming in to use it can't figure that out, then they can't come here. You know, I think we need to take that hard line. And, you know, I, I know that some of these things have already been set, but I think that's something that, that you could really put out there. Like if whoever comes in at the end of the night says, you know what, the team that left here, it was disgusting. You know, you, you get a warning and the next time you don't get to come back. Sorry, find another spot. You know, I don't think that's too much to ask.
Organizations ruin it for everybody else either, you know?
Right.
Go after the organizations that we're having problems with and.
Right.
Just even a simple checklist.
Right.
You hand it out to your coaches, here it is. You don't like it?
And then they're responsible for it. So in the end, you know, if, if it comes down to where you can't use Oakfield anymore, it's on you. It's, it's not on anybody else. It's on you, your coaches, your kids, you know, whatever organization it is. I don't think it's that difficult.
That's a reasonable request for sure. Just set those expectations up front and have a system in place. If it gets broken.
Okay, and I think I jumped the gun here on this one. I jumped a ten to, I, Trina's got me all worked up.
About lifeguarding?
I'm sorry, John.
You just did that to make her feel better.
Yeah, I did. I circled back to make people feel better a lot of times, especially my classrooms, even if I don't. So ten point one is the new proposed courses and I, and I, Matt just left. And I think he was going to talk about these a little bit.
Um, no, they're just three proposed courses as electives for next year up at the middle high school building. These are just, this is just for your information. You're not voting on these. Matt and I kind of have to do, you know, just kind of our, our, you know, investigations into them. And if they're still on the board agenda for January, I know Matt will probably have the, the teachers come and present. This is just a heads up for you. So they might be coming, you know, next month or.
So they might be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Just take a look at it. They were presented to Matt and we still have to have discussions about them, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, just for your information.
Okay, thanks, John.
They look exciting.
Yeah, I, I thought they were kind of neat. I liked the math and art when they looked really super cool. Super cool. They all looked really good though. And to personnel, be it resolved that items, I feel like I'm missing something, guys. I'm, I'm sorry. I feel off all of a sudden. Did I miss the CSEA?
No, you're good.
Eleven point one.
Okay. Jeez, please, I need a cube.
He still plus her from earlier.
Any cube cards?
Do you need my copy?
Two to eleven nine.
Eleven to, thank you, Matt.
You're doing great.
All right, thank, keep it, keep telling me. Be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven point nine be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So Matt, you got it first there. Maria, you want a second there, please? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven, ten. Appointment for bus driver, be it resolved that Daniel Aston be approved to a probationary position of bus driver effective January second, two thousand and twenty-four? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I like her on the bus in the morning. She is a happy, happy person and I like that. She greets my kids nicely.
She's all right, isn't she?
Yeah.
So we got a second there for it was tied. I'm going to give it to Natalie on this one. I think she beat you by a hair there, Jackie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven, eleven, retirement, be it resolved that the board accepts the notice of retirement from Krista Derschog, fourth grade math teacher, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? At, at my house, my kids have really enjoyed Mrs. Derschog. And on a side note, about twenty years ago, I substituted in her room in second grade, when she was in second grade. And substitutes don't always get a whole lot of information, always on how to run the classroom when the teacher's out. And she had a system that I still use today that any substitute that comes in my room says, oh my gosh, this is amazing. But she did it all by color and folder. So every time there was like, like eleven oh three, it was time for ELA, you pick up the folder and then you were able to do it. And like I thought, oh my gosh, and, and not here in this district, but there was one time in another school district, I got a flash card for a whole day of kindergarten. And I thought, holy cow, what am I going to do with this? Yeah, I was like, I am so, they don't, they won't get my joke. I don't even know if I'm funny enough to get them. So, but long story short is Mrs. Derschog is a really great person. I think when I, I stopped and I, I talked to her at night of open house a couple of months ago, I think she was having a hard time and this was her, her last year. And that, that's a sign of not just a good teacher, but an excellent one. And I know I, I'm going to miss her. I was hoping that my, my third and second grader was going to get a chance to have her, but a couple of my older ones did, so I, I wanted to say thanks. Mrs. Derschog looks like almost thirty years here, twenty-nine years at Oakfield. That's a heck of a, that's thirty-four years is one heck of a commitment and thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven, twelve, resignation, be it resolved that the board accepts the resignation of Kathleen Ruder, bus driver, effective December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Wish you the best, Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven thirteen, Mr. Peterson just spoke of Mrs. Pritchett. Be it resolved that the board accepts the resignation of Jen Ritter Pritchett, teacher aide, effective January second, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think, Mr. Peterson, you did a wonderful job there. I also would like to thank Jen for stepping in, doing some coaching. She was kind of Johnny on the spot a couple of times and I appreciate it. And I think she's been used throughout the high school and, and did everything in a very willing way. So I wish her the best of luck and set your goal. Okay, on to closing. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Yeah, thank you. There you go, vice president. I'm losing it here. Yep, here we go. Closing remarks here. Jeff, or Jeff, yeah, who we have?
My turn?
Yes, sir. Yes, I think so.
I'm gonna keep it, gonna keep it simple. Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year and I hope everything's going pretty well and then, you know, see you guys in January. Much, much deserved break for all you guys and anybody else that gets a little time off, so that's it.
Thanks, Jeff. Maria?
Amen. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Shout out to the music department. That was an incredible Christmas concert that they put on. Both the middle high school and the elementary. I thought it was great. John, your role in the chorus concert was quite comical for the snow day request, but everyone had a, had a great time and it was a good concert. So kudos to the music department. But yeah, Merry Christmas, everyone. Well, well deserved time off for all of you, so thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Maria?
I appreciate the presentations tonight. I'm a data guy as well, so it's really cool to see our teachers using data to drive instruction, almost makes me want to fast forward to what these results will be of what they've got. Also, when you talk about the spiral back, makes me think about Mr. Phelps' presentation last year. You almost want to review that and then see what the results were from, from all the data they talked about there. So I thought that was really well done. I appreciate both of them for coming in to speak with us.
Thanks, Matt.
Pete?
Merry Christmas to our staff, our teachers, our families. Teachers, staff, enjoy your break. I'm sure parents will be happy to send their kids back to you in a few weeks.
Thanks, Pete. Natalie?
All right, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year. I think after today's meeting and last month's meeting, looking at all the data that has been compiled for all of our kids, I love to hear that sports are doing well, but academics is where it's at and it's our kids' future. They have a future in sports, which is awesome, but academics is where I want to see the kids excel. So having this data, being able to analyze it, look back through the elementary school to twelfth grade, get these kids what they need so they can succeed in life. So great job. I can't wait to see what we do with that data, what programs we bring in in the new coming year. So I look forward to all the hard work that you guys are putting in to making these kids excel, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Natalie. Jackie?
Kudos to, the presentations were phenomenal. I, I loved that. So ELA and science, I mean, Bernie and Dave did a great job. It's, I mean, it's a great model and it's really, it's enthusiastic. It's, I would love it. I just think that's really great how it's very inclusive of not just data by numbers, but the subjective with bringing the kids in and, and then seeing that. And it helps us, like that sort of stuff helps us as a board determine five, ten year down the road, you know, these capital projects that we just approve and those things of where we as a district need to centralize and identify things that can help our students in academics succeed and what we need to do to help give them those tools or spaces to do that. So that's, that's pretty, pretty nice to have that data driving that stuff. Thanks for the, the voters, all the community to come out and at least be a part of it. The educational forums to come and have people present, ask questions. I, I really think it's very helpful to have that information to go on to, to keep having, making good decisions for our community and our district. So thank you, tell all that. Happy holidays. Enjoy your break, everybody.
Thanks, Jackie.
Jessica.
Thank you. No, I, I just, I, there's been a bunch of activities that have occurred in just the last couple of weeks. I was enjoying just spelling bee. I was at Page Turners the other day. Band concerts were fantastic. I just am so happy to see us have the ability to provide enrichment. I, I really love the, the idea of kids just having the opportunity to do these different, these activities after school, teachers-based like programs that they come up with. I just, I think it's wonderful and I appreciate it. And I, I'm going to keep it short tonight, believe it or not. And just happy holidays to everybody and thank you for all the hard work. And just enjoy your time off with your families, so thank you. Can I get a motion to end the meeting at seven forty-eight?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Enjoy your Oliver.